I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. Yeah, but I can't remember. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this. It was. I don't know if you've ever seen this.[615.91]
On item number one, and item number two, and item number three. So. Excuse me? And we have a presentation prior to that. So, Mr. Blair, how ca- I've looked for you. I said, "Oh, he's here." Dan Blair with PG&E is giving us a presentation on parking lot A.
Good evening. Mayor Dahlmeier, members of the council. I'm Dan Blair. I'm a government relations representative with PG&E. Thank you for your time tonight. We have a brief presentation for an update on the parking lot A, which is our cleanup project on Huntuna Montgomery Street. So, our purpose today is to inform the council and members of the community, and also to provide information about some public comment periods that are coming up. And they get plenty of time for people to have time to respond to that. So, I'm actually going to introduce and turn the presentation over to Tracy Craig with Craig Communication, who is our partner on this project. So, with that, I'll let Tracy go ahead.
Hi there. My name is Tracy. Thank you for having us tonight. And with me is Max Rayhany. Put your hand up. Over there, he's with Terra Pacific Group, who's PG&E's consultant on the project. They're engineer of record. And very, very briefly, I thought all these people were here for me, but I was disappointed. So, very quickly, I'm going to just walk you through this project. It's located down here, which is the east of us at the corridor of Hooton and Montgomery. It's used as a parking lot. Everybody knows where it is. Hold on here. This is- I am horrible at these things. There we go. Apparently, I'm not. Okay, so cleanup overview. PG&E has a cleanup program where they address manufactured gas plant sites that they used to own or operate. There used to be one here back in the day, in the 1800s to the 1900s. It provided gas for heating, cooking, lighting. It was a big deal for a city to have that. You might have heard of the term "gas lamp district." So, you got actual lights, and people got to take their lives from indoors to outdoors. And it was a big deal. It was a little bit of a dirty big deal, though. And so, some of the materials that was the byproduct of that process was buried on site when they would- when they ceased operations. And PG&E has a program to go clean that up. And they have 41 sites. About 20 of those have been cleaned up to date, including sites in downtown areas in San Rafael, St. Helena, let's see, Red Bluff, right by the river. So, they- the good news is, is we have one here. And we have lots of experience how to do it with minimal impact to the community. And moving my slide along. Hold on a minute. I'm really- I need my glasses here, guys. Sorry about that. Okay, so there's the site. We just went through that. And tonight, we have a little bit of a milestone with the program itself. As I told you, it was a gas plant. This program is being overseen by the Department of Toxic Substances Control. I think all of you are familiar with that agency through your Brownfield's work. We are- right now, we've finished the environmental investigation, and we're going into the draft cleanup plan, which has a really fancy name. It's called a remedial action plan. And there's a 30-day public comment period. So, that 30-day public comment period will start February 15th. It will end March 16th, hopefully. There'll be a public meeting at the midpoint of it. I did bring fact sheets for you that the Department of Toxic Substances will be mailing out in about a week. But we wanted to provide you an advance notice in case your constituents ask you. So, right now, we are at the draft cleanup pla- the public comment period phase. And then, hopefully, if it gets approved by PG&E after they consider- or DTSC after they consider public comments, we will go into the actual cleanup, which would start this summer. And when they did the site investigation, it did take quite a little bit of time. It took about five years. And that's because it's an iterative process, and we're working with the state agency. So, they make you keep coming back. But we did find contamination from about the shallow soils to about 30 feet. Contaminants of concern, if you're interested, are in the fact sheet. But just to be transparent, there's polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, petroleum products, metal arsenic, and some volatile organic compounds, all of which were very common for the manufactured gas plant site. And again, it was common to bury that stuff on site before environmental regulations came into play. So, DTSC has approved the site investigation. And we'll be going into public comment. And the site- the cleanup plan- did I do this right? Yeah, there we go. The cleanup plan is proposing that you excavate about 10,000 tons of soil, which sounds like a lot. It would be done in about eight months. I'm not going to read this to you, because everybody can read that. It would be done in about eight months. There would be lots of plans in place to protect the public health and make sure that merchants aren't too impacted. And again, you have an opportunity to read through the remedial action plan if you want to. It's pretty long and tedious. Or you can read the summary sheet. And we'll- this talks about the public meeting, and you can comment on that if you agree with it or not. Right behind you, is there? I'm not sure how you guys see this.
They have a TV in front of them.
Oh, they do. Okay, that's how technically, really, old, technically unsavvy. So, this shows the footprint of the parking lot itself, where you have the yellow kind of highlighted area, which would be, I think, I put that in my notes, but it's in the corner on Hooton and Montgomery. That's where the footprint of the gas plant site was. I think what you need to know here is that we would be taking about 3/4 of that parking lot up for about eight months to complete this remediation, which would leave about 20 parking spots, give or take, for the merchants to use. And we would also like to try to find maybe parking nearby. I've been out there a couple of times and looked at it. I think at the height of operations, there are probably 30 cars out there. But I'm not quite sure. So, I just want you to recognize that we would have to have a considerable footprint. We're also working with Don Rust to make sure that we have a plan in place to deal with that. And some more bad news here, kind of, we would have to replace some trees. And I know that that is a big, big deal in Orville. So, I wanted to be very transparent about this upfront. The trees would be in the northeastern corner of the site. There would be 14 of them. And we would remove all those. And the reason we have to remove them is there's contamination underneath them. And we can't access that without getting rid of the trees. They can't withstand that. And additionally, it's for safety reasons, too, so people can see why they're working with heavy equipment. As I said, we would replace all those trees. They're not going to be as big, but we would pick mature trees, and we would also do landscaping as part of that. And we would work at the city arborist on that plan as well. Health and safety, if the plan gets approved, we have all kinds of health and safety. First and foremost is communicating with the city and people in the area so that they know exactly what's going on, and there's no surprises. We also have daily tailboard meetings. We have specific plans in place to monitor the perimeter and excavation of the property of the air to make sure that it's protective of public health. We monitor for dust and odors. We have vibration monitors out there. We learned a lot of lessons over the last 10 years when we've been doing this. So, we would have all these plans in place and to make sure that the cleanup is done safely. Truck route, on average, if the project's approved, there would be seven trucks entering and exiting the site per day. It's about one or two per hour. They would travel down Montgomery East, get into the site, exit the site, and then go back up. And they would go either north or south on the freeway, depending on which landfill they're going to. We would have flaggers on site to manage traffic. And we would also have other cordon-off things and make sure it's very clear what people need to do. Okay, and there's the truck route. I think that's pretty hard to see. Maybe you see it better on your TVs.
We're good.
Community commitment. PG&E does do some neat things when they actually do these work. And I think probably the best is we do brief the fire and police to make sure that they know what work is going on. We also try to spend as much money as we can locally, and we make sure that you folks know those numbers. And near and dear to my heart is we hire maybe two to three people locally, which doesn't sound like a lot. But over the course of this working on their manufactured gas plant site, I think we've put 16 men back to work full-time. And we hire from fragile populations. So, we work with homeless shelters to get people that are homeless or unsheltered trained, back to work, and on people's payrolls. So, and then, we're just available. We have outreach staff that speak Spanish and English. They're there on site as needed. They'll work with the merchants to make sure they know what's going on and facilitate any kind of issues so that they're happy. And we have a toll-free number, and we're available 24/7 during remediation. Not because it's such a big deal, but because we really want this to go well if it gets approved. And that is all I've got. So, questions for me? I'm going to leave the fact sheet and also leave the presentation. And I just want to say, I went through that really quickly. So, Dan, you can call them if you have questions. We're happy to meet with any of you one-off if you want more information or just even a phone call. Questions for me?
Anybody? Just so you know, we're having a little bit of technical difficulties. So, my screen is not working, so I can't see if there's somebody in the queue. So, I'm going to be asking-
We have no speakers requested at this time.
I'm going to be asking Don throughout the evening. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate it.
Okay, moving on, we have a speaker on every single item on the consent calendar. So, I'm going to call them out one by one. Item number one, approval of the January 16, 2018 regular meeting minutes of the city of Orville. Speaker Billy Spear.
Good evening, City Council. Actually found a whole bunch of stuff wrong on the minutes. For one, you spelt my name wrong. It's two Es, no A. During our last meeting, Councilman Thompson talked about a bias in the city council. And I hadn't really thought about it. And after I thought about it a little, I could see where he was coming from. But as I looked over the minutes from our last meeting, I could see there was for sure a bias just in the minutes themselves on item number one. When Trudy spoke, it was a clear, short definition of what she spoke about.
I'm sorry, Mr. Spear, I'm going to ask you to wait a minute, because the council members have just been handed a bunch of material, and they're reading that as opposed to listening to you. So, I'm going to go ahead and let you start over.
Sure.
Because I want to make sure that you're heard. Thank you.
Okay.
He's making reference to-
They were passed out. That's what I'm saying. They had stuff there. Okay, can you start the time over, please? Sorry about that.
It's okay. It helped me get some of my nerves down. So, my name, S.P.E.E.R., not E.A.R. Councilman Thompson talked about a bias. And after thinking about it, I was thinking, I could see his point. But after reading the minutes, I would say he's definitely on to a bias. On item number one, when Trudy spoke, it gave a clear definition of what she spoke about and what her point was. Well, when we get to item 12, it was, everyone was lumped together. And it was saying for or against. And there were a lot of valid points that people came here and waited a long time to- It seems that they still don't want to pay much attention to me when I speak. But waited a long time to speak and for their points to be made. For example, Pastor Kenny Malone read a letter from Sheriff Honi. It wasn't even mentioned in the minutes. On my- when I read an article from the LA Times, it said that I read an article from the LA Times, a brief description of what I was speaking about. For Pastor Kenny Malone, they didn't say anything about the issue that he had. It just said for. Didn't say nothing about the letter that he had from our sheriff, which I think would be pretty important to mention in the minutes, who was against it and the reasons that he was against it. Also, our Congressman Doug Lamoffa, Representative, showed up here to speak. And again, it said Doug Lamoffa speaks against marijuana. He didn't speak against marijuana. He spoke against lawlessness. He spoke against the city and the state going against what is happening in Washington. He brought fresh information about an overturning that happened in Washington just that very week before about regulations that the Obama administration ignored and that they were going to be enforcing, something that's very important for the issue that we've been looking at. It's about the money laundering, about taking money that you can't even deposit to the bank. And our city is considering- they've already considered it. They've already spent our tax money to go pursue ways to go around the federal money deposit system of- to go against our- running out of time- against our federal drug laws. And it definitely is biased. It's corrupt, and it's not going to stand. Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and address this. I think Mr. Spear brings up some very valid points. Even though we do paraphrase our minutes on the agenda, I think that the value of having these scribed like we do on the SBF, especially for some of the people that are speaking to this, because it's going to continue to come forward. I think that in this case, it's a valid point.
Madam Mayor, Don Rust, on the minutes, the minutes are actually on the Internet. You can go and listen to them verbatim. So, we don't transcribe them like we used to, because we have them on the Internet. You can go to the Internet, to the meeting, and listen to each meeting. The entire meeting is recorded. So, all we do is- it's not a transcription. It's just more of an action items. Action items, what the action was taken. If you want a full breadth of the meeting, you would go to the Internet and listen to it completely. That's what we've been doing for the past, since I believe this chamber was-
I understand, but I do know that we actually still have some of the meetings scribed. Bob Marciniak used to do SBF word-for-word. So, and that's just the Supplemental Benefit Fund. It's not the city minutes. And if somebody's requesting that it be done, I think that we could take the time to do it, especially on important issues.
Madam Mayor, if the city council wants us to do that, then it would take four council members to tell us to do that. So, if four council members want to tell us to do that, we'd be more than happy to do that.
Anybody?
To do that, what would be the cost? I know we've been told over and over and over how much the cost is to do staff reports. How much will this cost us?
If you would like an item brought back, we will bring something back. We can either have it done through a process to have somebody record it, or listen to the recording, type it out for us, or we can type it out ourselves. There will be a cost, but we'll bring that cost back. I couldn't. I wouldn't want to venture to guess, because I don't want to be wrong.
Right, right. I mean, if it is available, I mean, minutes are minutes. I mean, they- if we're going to do full minutes, then where are we recording it? I mean, because- and that's going to take a lot of staff time on it.
How long have we been actually recording?
Since this chamber opened in 2011.
And you had to come and get a DVD originally. It's just now being broadcast, so somebody has to know where to go find it.
No, I believe the minutes go all the way back to when we first started recording. It's on the Internet, so. The minutes are not?
I'm sorry, what was that, Don?
I think she said they're not.
The minutes that we post on the Internet are action minutes.
Right.
What is- can be requested at City Hall is a DVD of the audio that is recorded during the meeting. And it is $5 to request a DVD, a copy of the DVD.
So.
Well, can I ask a question? I was under the impression that we could view the- Sorry, that we could view the whole meeting on the city council website. It's recorded, right? So, that actually is a recording of every word.
If everything is functioning right, yes.
Yeah, which has just started.
Okay. Yeah, it seems to me like a lot of extra work. And I think it's been working fine as it is personally.
More than happy to do whatever the council would like us to do.
Is there anybody else? Is there anybody that would like to have this looked into to see the cost of transcribing the minutes of the last meeting?
We can at least look into the cost of it. It'd be fine. No problem with that.
Okay. If we could put at least on the front page of the website where people can find the transcription of and the audio of the last city council meeting.
Okay.
Moving on to looking for a motion with the correction of Mr. Spear's name. And I would like added to the minutes myself that the letter from Mr. Honi was read in opposition to the item. And I would also like a copy of the letter that, if it isn't already attached, that was presented by Doug Lamoffa's office. Item number one, looking for a motion.
I make a motion with those- I'm not sure how to- with those exact corrections to approve the consent calendar.
Well, I second that motion that with the correction of Pastor Bill Spear's name with two Es. Additionally, the letter that was read from Sheriff Corey and that a copy of the letter written by Congressman Doug Lamoffa be included in those minutes.
There's a first and second. Can you take roll call on voting since the vote- oh, wait. Mine doesn't work. Well, I'm in. I can't see over here. All votes are in. Does anybody wish to change? Voting closed.
The motion passed.
Moving on to item number two, data recovery. The council will receive information regarding data that was inadvertently deleted from one of the storage devices at the police department, and the data recovery was necessary to recover the lost data. This is for information purposes only, but we do have a speaker, Billy Spear.
Thank you, council members. Thank you. So, when I read this, I was thinking how this could look to somebody if they didn't know how- what a man of honor and integrity our police chief is. It's important to be people of honor, of integrity, of your word, of your oath, so that when stuff happens, you know, you don't have to cross- it don't have to cross your mind, is there something funky going on here? You know, data in the news and the political aspect that we are in today. Is there something going on in the police department that this data got lost, and they have to try to recover it? But our police chief is a man of honor, a man of his word, a man of his oath. He ain't going to cut corners or break federal laws or state laws or county laws or even city ordinances to try to make money. And it's important that we honor the men and women of honor in our city that will take away any doubt if a data gets lost in the city. What's going on with the city? Well, they'll do anything for money. They will- they don't care about federal laws, as long as it ain't breaking their city ordinance. So, again, I'm just real proud of our police chief, real proud of his honor and his integrity. And it's sad that we had to spend finances to get to recover the data, but I have full confidence in him. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have something to speak about this?
Madam Mayor, there's not a lot to say about this. This was a piece of information that was brought to the council because information regarding our View View cameras had been inadvertently lost. It wasn't deleted. It was lost in the system. It was beyond our capability to recover it and bring it back. We have to keep that information. It's not a choice, not an option. It's something that could contain evidence. It also could be exculpatory evidence. So, it had to be recovered. So, it was an inadvertent thing that happened, and it was taken care of.
Okay. All right, thank you. Looking for a motion on item number two? Information only. Moving on to item number three, the final item that was on the consent agenda. We do have a speaker. It's CC 17-1, rezone of the 1355 Washington Avenue from MXD to MXC, second reading. This- if it's a second reading, and it's on the consent calendar? Okay, we have a speaker, Billy Spear.
Hello, long time no see. So, I was recently this week, got a call to go do an estimate to remove some trees from the property owners there. And while I was talking with them, I found out that they had originally purchased that property from the city of Orville with the intention of building the business there. So, they purchase it and put all this money into developing it. And then, during that time, the city changes the zoning. And then, when he comes back here to try to get the zoning rechanged back, you guys give him a hard time. Oh, it's going to do the traffic here, or this, or that. We need to become more business-friendly for legal businesses that when he makes money, he can take his money down to the bank and deposit it like a regular taxpayer. And we need to be business-friendly for the community. When we see someone coming to spend their money in our town, that's the way we're going to get out of debt. That's the way that we're going to prosper, is being business-friendly. Let it be said of Orville City Council that when you come, they're going to say, "How can we help you?" Not, "How can we make it harder?" Or, "How's it going to affect where I live? How's it going to affect this?" That's been a business there in Orville for years and years. And since the city sold it back to them, you didn't tear it down. You obviously sold it back to them for a purpose, for a business. So, it's- it is- I can't understand why you would give the gentleman such a hard time and not be more business-friendly. Building our community, helping each other, working together in legal, legitimate, honorable things are going to make our city better. Working together to build up and encourage, to get businesses to come here, to be business-friendly, to make things easier for people, not to argue about on the corner of Montgomery Street about where the sign's going to be. They came with a plan with you guys. We're going to do this, and we're going to do this. And encourage them instead of saying, "Well, I don't like where the sign's going to be" and make it take longer. Speed it up. Get government out of the way. Let our community prosper. Let our community contribute. Let our community work together. Help the business section. Don't fight against them. Don't be so hard on all your rules and your regulations. It seems like we only follow the ones we want to follow. We don't care about the federal ones, or, "Oh, I don't agree with that one, because it's just-" so we'll just ignore it. We have to follow the rule of law. We've got to be men and women of honor, of integrity. We've got to help each other. We've got to encourage each other. We need each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that was item number three, looking for a motion on item number three.
I move that we waive the second reading introduced by Title Only, Ordinance Number 1826. And this is an ordinance the Orville City Council making findings and approving the rezoning of 1355 Washington Avenue from downtown mixed-use to corridor mixed-use.
I'll second that. But I'd like to add that when we discuss different situations, we're not giving people trouble. We're trying to make sure that it's right. we're not giving people trouble. We're trying to make sure that it's right.
All votes are in. Does anybody wish to change their vote? Voting closed.
The motion passed.
Moving on to public hearings this evening, the, item number four, potential fee increase for tobacco retailer license. We do have quite a few speakers on this item, so that you, you see the stopwatch in front of you and hopefully we can all participate in that. Potential fee increase for tobacco retail license, staff report, Mr. Rust.
Yes, thank you. Again, this, this came to us and actually a present, staff met with the California Coalition, Health Coalition on September twenty-second. And then this came to the council on September, or November seventh for a presentation. There was a presentation given by that group. We were then directed unanimously to go and work on this and bring this back. Currently, it is at the Planning Commission working on this, and the Planning Commission has split this into two items. One, the item for you tonight is the fee increase, which is a fee increase that we discussed here on November seventh that the council seemed to be okay with, but we go through a process to make sure that it's done and done properly. The second item, which is the banning of menthol and flavored tobacco, the Planning Commission is having a hard time with that. So we've met on, in December, we met in January, and we are going back on February twenty-second to listen to it again. The issue of this is banning something that is legal is the issue. So we are, the Planning Commission is working through that issue, and that is not ready yet. However, the compromise was to bring the fee here. They passed that as part of the process to bring the increase of two hundred and two dollars to, back to the city council for approval. So if this is approved tonight, if you take the action to approve this tonight, it will take sixty days before this fee would cook in. With that, I'll answer any other questions that you have. And the other item, I'm not sure when it will be here. Hopefully, after the twenty-second, it, we should be able to bring it back in March, but it is working through the issue with the Planning Commission.
Okay. With that said, is there any comments from the dais before I open this up for public comment? This is a public hearing, so anybody that wishes to speak on item number four on the agenda this evening may do so. There is a blue slip over on the wall. If you wouldn't mind filling that out, and it will get passed to me if you feel like there, you need to say something more than the slips I have in my hand. So, thank you. The first person is Peggy Adamson.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the rest of the city council. I opened up the paper this last Monday morning, Monday, February fifth, and I read tobacco license fee may be increased. And it says that it may be more than two hundred dollars. It may go up to curb cigarette use and tobacco sales. In my opinion, as a voting citizen, I think that's kinda ridiculous because cannabis is a big issue in our community right now. And to my understanding, some of you very well could be in favor of opening up the cannabis shops. But yet, it says to curb the use of cigarettes and tobacco. What, what is a priority? To cut cigarette usage or to increase the use of cannabis in our community? So I think we definitely need to get our priorities right. And all of you, I just want you all to think about that very deeply. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Bobby O'Reilly.
Good evening, city council. Let me find my notes for this. So, I'm actually in favor of a fee increase, as well as people I've spoke with. Thirty-six dollars is the fee right now as it's listed. That's pennies for a licensing fee for anything. I am in agreeance with Peggy. Priorities are not prioritized correctly at the moment. However, I do think that fees for, for these such items shall, how did I word this? They should follow the times and update more regularly. I think these fees are a little outdated compared to other places and, and fees of similar items. And I think that adjusting the fees properly would be a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Melissa Anderson.
Hi, council members. I'm Melissa Anderson. I'm from the Tobacco Education Program at Butte County, for all of Butte County. At past meetings, I've heard hesitation from the council about moving forward with this increase because Orville is the only city with a tobacco retail license right now. And I just wanna assure you that the Tobacco Education Program is working hard on educating the communities of Chico and Gridley about flavored tobacco in hopes that we'll be moving forward there as well with tobacco retail licenses. If Orville goes first, it could really help get the ball rolling for other cities. Funding law enforcement with this annual fee can hold our tobacco retailers accountable for their transactions with our youth, and it could really cut back on youth access to tobacco. So, thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Is it Rayanne West?
Good evening, city council. My name is Rayanne West. I'm an intern for Smoke Free North State at California Health Collaborative, and I support the proposed increase for tobacco retail licensing ordinance because I believe it'll be a major step in lowering the prevalence of underage smoking in the city of Orville. The results from a twenty seventeen public opinion poll in Orville revealed that fifty percent of the adult residents surveyed believed it was too easy for youth under the age of twenty-one to purchase or access cigarettes, e-cigarettes, and flavored tobacco products. An increase in the tobacco retail licensing fee would allow stronger enforcement of the laws meant to prevent underage tobacco use and put us one step closer to lowering smoking tobacco rates amongst teens in Orville. Thank you.
Thank you, Rayanne. Is it Marcy, Marcy Hughes?
It's actually Macy Hughes.
Macy, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's perfectly fine. So, as you've said, my name is Macy Hughes. I am a Lost Plumas High School student. I also do tech work for the Boys and Girls Club down at Orville. I support the LRC, the raising in, in funds, the, the raising in price for the, for the tobacco shops. Because when I go on break at Lost Plumas and after school, I see kids blatantly smoking cigarettes on their way home, on their way down to Robinson's, all, all around Orville. I see people that I see at high school doing things that, you know, obviously wouldn't be allowed at high school. So, I, I guess that's my two cents on this. Every single other, other city that I'm looking at from this list right here, Sacramento had a twelve percent drop after they raised the prices. San Fernando had, wow, they had a thirty-three percent drop when they passed this ordinance. And, yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out this evening. Bruce Baldwin.
I'd just like to say, Macy, thank you for coming, and I'm impressed with your involvement. We don't have enough young people coming to these meetings. Thank you for coming and speaking.
Can you teach the Planning Commission how to use that stopwatch thing?
We will.
Thank you. My name is Bruce Baldwin. Thank you for listening tonight, council. I'm with the Butte County Office of Education. I direct student health and prevention programs. We deal with helping prevent, reduce, and treat drug and alcohol abuse with students throughout the county, and that includes tobacco. I speak in favor of raising the licensing fee tonight. And I come from a little different place. I, I smoked as a teenager when I was in high school. And I believe that adding this two hundred dollar fee and, and giving the Orville PD a little money to do some enforcement will actually benefit the honest retailers. I believe that the vast majority of people who sell tobacco products, retailers, are honest and follow the rules. But there are few that don't. And I could tell you, as a kid who smoked, I knew the ones that didn't. And that's where I bought not only my cigarettes, but my gas and my soda pop and my, you know, and I, and I believe that that's probably happening here in Orville, too. In fact, I know it's happening. The kids know which stores will sell cigarettes to them, and that hurts the honest retailers who are following the rules. So, a two hundred dollar increase, in my opinion, will, will bring vast benefits in reducing and enforcing these, these rules so that kids can't get their hands on cigarettes. I mean, the rules are twenty-one now, so, you know. And, and I also wanna commend this council. You, I don't know if you know, you were the first city north of Sacramento to actually put in a retail license. In many places, anyone can go sell cigarettes on a street corner. It's perfectly legal. You can't do that with any other drug. So just having a license and making sure that the folks who sell cigarettes, you know, follow some basic rules and get some basic education, and there's a little bit of money for the police department to go out and enforce those rules. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Michelle Maury.
Hello. Good evening. I'm Michelle. Thank you for taking the time to talk about this. I work at the American Lung Association here in Butte County. I'm the health educator there. I work up in Paradise mostly, but I also worked down in Orville. Like Bruce said, you guys are a leader in this community, and what Melissa said, too, they're working in Chico. We're working on in Paradise this, and we're just a little bit behind you guys, but if you guys are a leader on this, you will spark the rest of the county to join you, so that's really important to do. I'd also like to note that with the point about the youth, it is really, I'm really happy that he was here to talk about that. That was really great. I work up with the youth in Paradise, and they tell me all those stories about how they get it. And yes, there are responsible retailers, but they know which ones, like Bruce said, that will sell it to them. And two hundred and thirty dollars annually, that is like an hour, less than an hour of profits for retailers. So, doesn't really cut much into their profits, but it also enforces responsible business owners, and I think that's really important. And the American Lung Association supports this. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Eric Smith.
Counsel, Madam Mayor, thank you for this opportunity to speak to this issue. And I just wanna commend you as someone who has done a lot of work in our community to stand against drugs. That's why I'm wearing my Red Ribbon Week bracelet here this, this evening. And so I just wanna commend you on the painstakingly time that you've taken to document the effects of cigarette smoking. We all know, I think it's well established in our community, in our society, what cigarette smoking leads to, which is premature death, of course, amongst a lot of other issues. That being said, I know that accuracy is very important to the city. And as I perused through the attachments in the city ordinances that were referenced regarding this issue, I noticed a couple of items that probably should be addressed. One, and another gentleman mentioned it, it's now twenty-one, not eighteen, of course, the legal age. So I think in your ordinance number seventeen ninety-four, that probably should be updated. And then the other piece, in the resolution of seventeen ninety-four, there's some language here that I think, in light of the other issues that are kinda hot buttons, the cannabis issue, I think that this also comes to bear in this issue as well. And I'm just gonna read the second page of Attachment D. It states, "The city has a substantial interest in promoting compliance with federal, state, and local laws." So in light of the issues before the council, I believe that the term "federal laws", it should have two words added, "when convenient", when convenient, federal law. Because I think that's kind of what you're looking at with some of the other issues before the council. So if you're gonna be consistent, and that you certainly don't wanna be accused of hypocrisy, no one wants that. That's a very harsh term and word. No one would ever wanna be accused of that. So I believe this ordinance should be updated for the federal law when convenient for the city of Orville. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Dolores Vasquez.
Good evenings, council members. My name's Dolores Vazquez, and I'm with the California Health Collaborative. And I just wanna echo from what Mason said was because he sees for himself that the kids can get the, the tobacco. And I think with the increase of the, of the, of the license fee would help the sting operations to help, you know, keep it away from the kids. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dolores. Okay, I'm gonna try, is it Ashad? A S, is it H A K? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I couldn't, I had a hard time reading it.
No, this is Ashok.
Ashok, okay, thank you.
I am first time in a meeting like that, so please for, forgive if I speak something wrong. I don't know. But I am opposing, as peoples are saying, increase of license fees, okay? As far as I am a store owner, we are selling tobacco, other products, everything. We spend millions of dollars to buy a store. When we are selling a tobacco or some other products to the customers, we always check their ID for tobacco and beer license, beer, et cetera. And we never try to sell minors. Even day before yesterday, I got a letter from city. I forget to bring with me. Many times we got a letter, "We are thankful to you whenever the sting operation goes, you not selling the product to the minors." Any store owner has no intention to sell the minors because we are spending millions of dollars. After three citations, we have to lose our, all the license, all our money. Why should we do like that? Please, to survive the business owners, to stay in the business, not impose, not increase the more license fees because we are already paying too much license fees in many other items like gas pumps, fees, weight and measure department fees, like cigarette fees, like, et cetera, too many kind of fees we are already, we are paying. And I am thankful to you if you guys not think about to raise the license fees more. Thank you.
Thank you. Cavender, Kenny?
Good afternoon, Mayor, council. My name is Kenny Chitkara. It's Cavender, but I lived in this country forty-three years, so I learned to go easy names. So my name is Kenny, so it's easy for you guys to say. Basically, I'm representing a lot of these store owners. And a couple of things Mr. Spear said, I'd like to say that first. Think about the small business person. If you want your community to keep increasing and have good people in this town coming, we need to think about that before, instead of increasing fees and stuff. I'll give you just a couple of points about our store owners. We work at our stores over sixty hours per week trying to make ends meet. We make pennies on the dollar when we, on the volume of our businesses. We go shopping at our local wholesale stores like Sam's Club, Costco, Food Macs, and Walmart to save money. So this increase will affect our local small businesses. So trying to raise two hundred dollars may be nothing to someone else. I have to serve at least three hundred customers to make that two hundred dollars. How many would you like to work with, three hundred customers? And they're not always the greatest customers. I love my customers, but as you know, you deal with all kinds of issues. One of the other things I wanna do is thank, I came to your office about three weeks ago because no one knew about this issue, even your local businesses. Right now, we have over twelve local businesses who own stores right here in town. They did not even know about this issue. So Mr. Lewis, I came and talked to Mr. Lewis, and he did say that he will make the effort to let people know. And I do appreciate that you guys have put it in the paper and you're informing. I just got even a message that it was on the TV this evening, that you guys are having a meeting on the twenty-second on the menthol thing. So I do appreciate that you're reaching So I do appreciate that you're reaching out to the store owners. We not always get to read the newspaper, if you find these days newspapers, but I appreciate the effort you made for informing us. And I do appreciate you think seriously about opposing this fee because it does make a big difference. And we will leave some letters for the other meeting also before we leave. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Kenny?
Thank you.
Mitch?
Hi, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mitch Durgali. And please, I oppose this fees increase on the tobacco license. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mitch. Elias?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Elias Durgali. I'm the owner of Pig's Liquor Store on Meyer Street. And I've been here 30 years in the store. And increase the price on the license, that will affect us. You know, we follow the rule. We're not doing nothing wrong. And I just received a letter from the state of California, from Sacramento. They thanking me for not selling tobacco to minors. They sent someone to the store underage, and I did not sell it. So if someone sold to minors, that will affect us as a good people. We need to help each other, to be with each other, to help the community and city of Oroville. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you want the letter?
You can, if you want to give us the copy? All right, thank you. Shresh?
I opposed the fees, too much fees. I last time in the, my round over there, I, million dollar I lose last time. He know everything, but never help city. Too many time I either meeting this guy, so nothing any help. I small business, so maybe I oppose your fees, license fees.
Thank you, Shresh. Sam?
Madam Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Sam Saye. And I'm here with some of our EPCA retailers. We are a, an association for a small convenience stores. This is, was brought to our attention that you guys are trying to raise the fees on the licenses. The gentleman had spoke and says, anybody can set up shop at a corner on the street. That's not true. Our stores pay $265 a year to the state of California to hold a tobacco license. By the city of Oroville imposing an increase of over $200, that does put a little bit of economical burden on our stores. Again, it's not the $200. There's too many $200 fees that are out there. And this would be on top of the rest of them. Like the gentleman said there, the small business needs some help. So please, give them, tell them that you guys care about the small business people and the small business owner. Although, some of the people said $200. Really, it's a lot of money to a lot of our retailers. I do oppose it. Thank you very much for hearing me out.
Thank you, Sam. Stephanie?
Hello. Good morning, good evening. I was just, sorry to be against, I am not against small business, but I honestly feel like this is a very, very low fee. I was looking through other cities in California, most have double, if not close to triple the fee. And I just think that we are a city that desperately needs money, and we might consider looking into all possible fees that can be increased. And as I understand it, this is something that a business could write off as an expense. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Karen? Is there a Karen? Corinne?
Karen.
Karen.
Hi there. My name is Karen Schwastik. I currently work the Butte County Office of Education. I have worked with California Health Collaborative in these efforts. I just came up here. There's not much more I can say. A lot of the people who are in favor here have already said it. I work with a lot of those individuals, and so, of course, I'm in favor as well because I do work with youth, or I have worked with youth at California Health Collaborative. And so, I don't want to discredit the worth of small businesses. I've been a small business owner myself in the past, so I understand that they are, they make up our community. But I'm also trying to put more focus on, this is the worth of our youth, of the community. We can argue all night where they're getting these products from, how they're getting these products. I'm sure there's a lot of individuals in here who will say, yeah, they're not selling to these, to you. And there's a good chance they aren't, but there is someone who is selling to you. And I think by supporting this increase, which others have mentioned, is really, I know 200 seems like a lot to their business, but they're selling other goods. They have other products that they are selling as well, too, that will bring an income to them. We've mentioned before, there's other cities and counties that have implemented an increase in this fee that is far more than we're even suggesting be put into place. And those businesses are still afloat. It didn't kill those businesses. They are still selling other products, and they're still able to sell these products. It's just making sure that the products are only ending up in the hands of the people who it's intended for. Because then it does give, it gives additional funds so that law enforcement can become involved and be able to afford to go out there and do these sting operations and be able to enforce current laws and possible future laws that we have surrounding youth usage of these products. And so I just wanted to get up here to, again, give my support and say that I am definitely in favor of an increase and to just support those individuals who are working on these efforts.
Thank you. Kent Fowler?
Mayor, council. I'm a little dismayed tonight about hearing some of the hyperbole. I'm probably the only libertarian in the audience. Maybe not. I think about five or six years old when my mom said, "You can smoke cigarettes when you smoke a whole pack in front of me." Both my parents smoked. My dad died on the 12th of December, COPD. You would think that I'd be a very staunch anti-tobacconist. Wrong. I don't smoke cigarettes. I smoke a cigar or pipe tobacco on occasion. I can put it down anytime I want. I don't like the smell of cigarettes. I don't like seeing young people smoke cigarettes. I heard a lot of disinformation, misinformation. Tobacco is governed by federal law. Nobody can just sell it on a corner. That's a bunch of baloney. Fees versus taxes. You guys are making a tax out of a fee. That's wrong. It's improper. Fees are supposed to be based upon the cost of government, upon the duty to serve. It is not something extra. If you guys don't like tobacco, then outlaw it. Have the guts to do that. This is manby pamby. I don't respect it. If children are getting tobacco products, look at the parents, look at their peers, and have law enforcement do their job. Sorry, chief. You're doing a great job, by the way. But that's the issue, law enforcement. If you guys want to act like moral police, then do the job and outlaw tobacco. Thank you.
Thank you, Kent. Okay, that was the last blue slip I have on item number four. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak on item number four, potential fee increase for tobacco retailer license? Come forward.
Pastor Steve Terry, Oroville Rescue Mission. I will tell you that, on the subject itself, I'm kind of torn by conservative beliefs. I agree a lot with what Kent has said. Yet, at the same token, I come at this from a little bit of a different angle. I work with the homeless population. I'm amazed at people that have no money, that have no ability to support themselves, that are dependent on our government for everything, and yet can afford to get cigarettes. And I watched them smoke what resources they have right out through the air. And it's dumbfounding to me, and it's as aggravating as it gets. And so I'm kind of, I hate fees, extra fees to businesses. I hate them with a passion. That's my conservative beliefs. On the other hand, I know what I deal with on this side of it. But I really want to speak to the irony of all this. Here, on one hand, because here in the planning commission, we have, we have a problem in the planning commission with the menthol aspect of cigarettes because it's a legal substance. And we have a plan, a problem with banning what is legal. And cigarettes, for all intents and purposes, in our society is legal. I can't stand them. I hate the smoke. I don't want to smell like a chimney. I hate that stuff. But it's legal. On the other hand, and it's federal. And we want to obey federal law, but on the other hand, folks, guess what? Someone's mentioned consistency. We want to go after menthol in cigarettes, and at the same token, totally disregard federal law and bring in dispensaries and cannabis in total violation of federal law. So we're going to go after something that's legal and bring in that which not, is not legal. I can't hardly wrap my mind around that. It is just absolutely amazing to me what we're doing. And I think we need to look at the consistency of what we're doing. That's been mentioned a couple of times. And we really need to look at the consistency of this because we are really headed down a wrong path. Thank you.
So Sheri Bunker can come up, and then?
Somebody left a pen. Hi, I'm Sheri Bunker. I live in Oroville. I, I am a former smoker. I smoked menthol cigarettes. It irritates me to no end that you are considering this fee increase because I think it's a little bit much. A small fee increase, I can understand. You're not going to, you're not going to bail the city out on 200 bucks from 12, 15 people a year. It's just not going to happen. The money is not there for this. And then you turn around, and you've got, like Steve said, you've got, looking at doing pot shops. Why isn't marijuana and cannabis added in on this as a green leafy vegetable matter? It is tobacco. It is something that people smoke. It should be added in on this ordinance also if you're going to pass it. I just feel that we're looking in the wrong direction. Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name is Sohail Khalil. I'm the owner of Tony's Food and Liquor on Table Mountain.
I'm sorry, sir. What was your name again?
Sohail Khalil.
And you, the owner of?
Tony's Liquor.
Okay.
On Table Mountain. I want to mention that we already paying state tobacco license for the state, which is, and it's like 260, 265. And now, this is on the top of everything. You put $28 already fee, and you want to increase it more. It's not, we are not paying for any license also. We paid the state, and we paying you, and you want to increase it on the top, which is, it looks like it's not fair. Thank you.
Thank you. This is still a public hearing. If there's anybody else that wishes to speak, please come forward.
Counsel, thank you for hearing me. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but listening to everybody else, I'm just, my mind's spinning. I'm a small business owner, and we have had fees tried to be put on us. And I stand with these small business owners who are simply trying to make a living. For you to put a fee on them when you have recently, you have had our city acting administrator try to have a creative way to help out-of-town businesses come into our town with jamboree housing. Creative fee waivers that were voted down thankfully at the attorney's request. But you are willing to bend over for out-of-town nonprofits that are not going to bring one tax penny into this city through property taxes, and you want to put this fee on small businesses? I, I can't tell you what a wrong direction you're going in. The business community of Oroville, we can tell you do not value it. You have not for quite some time. And each one of you who vote on this are saying, "We don't care about the Oroville businesses. We care about money, and we're putting all our bet on cannabis." And you're wrong, and I resent it as a longtime resident. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorraine. Is there anybody, yeah, Annie?
Mayor Dahlmyer, council members. I'm 60 years old. When I smoked my first cigarette, I was in eighth grade. And when I smoked my last cigarette, I was in eighth grade. I did not continue to smoke because frankly, it tasted like crap. It absolutely did. I don't know if you're supposed to say that in a city council meeting, but I did. So, God forgive me. But anyway, it tasted like crap. I used to always joke around as my kids were growing up, you know? And as I was telling them the importance of not starting to smoke in the first place. You know, I might have kept smoking if it actually tasted good. If it tasted like chocolate, I might have kept smoking. But it tasted terrible, so after that first cigarette, I thought, what do people do this for? It's terrible. So I quit. That first cigarette was my last cigarette. Why do something that is unpleasurable? But they've now made cigarette smoking pleasurable, which is really a sad situation. I can't do anything about that. Like, like Don Rust mentioned, you know, if it's legal, then it's legal. And we can't make something, we can't mandate the, or limit the sale of something that's legal. And I understand that on a federal level, on a state level, on a local level, it's legal. My father died of pneumonia secondary to emphysema. He was a smoker. My mother died of bladder cancer, which is the second most common type of cancer in smokers. You don't hear that much, but in addition to lung cancer, it also contributes to bladder cancer. And so I have a lot of reasons in my life that I'm opposed to smoking, and I absolutely counseled my children, one of which smokes and two of which don't, against smoking all of their lives. I counsel my grandchildren. Every person at the rescue mission that I meet with, I go, "Stop this. Do anything you can. Get Chantix. Get your doctor to help you. Do anything you can to quit smoking because it's going to end to length in your life." But I don't know that, and I agree with what Kent Fowler said, you can't make a fee a tax by increasing it. It's not the purpose of it. It has to be commensurate with what the costs are. Okay? So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for letting me address this.
Thank you, Annie. Okay. Anybody else? Actually, you've had your, you've had your time, so, thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? This is a public hearing. I'm in a closed public hearing. If there's nobody else that wishes to speak. Okay. Public hearing is closed. I'm looking for any comments or questions from the dais.
Councilmember Thompson?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
So there's no fees in surrounding cities regarding the license for selling tobacco? Is that correct?
I'm sorry, say that again.
What are the fees for the surrounding cities for tobacco?
In, in Butte County, I don't believe there is one. We were the first one to have a tobacco ordinance, or tobacco license fee.
I mean, well, we already have the 36, so.
Right.
Okay. And where specifically would the funds go?
The additional money is going to go to the Public Safety Department.
And how many shops are in town that?
There, there, I believe are 36. It's about $8,000 that'll be raised.
That would be specifically earmarked to Public Safety?
They're the ones who are gonna do the surveillance. And it's, again, it won't be a lot. It'll be, potentially, it'll be used with another program and they'll do some surveillance. But I'm probably the wrong person to ask that question.
There'll be minimal enforcement with this. There's not gonna be a special detail. There's not going to be an officer hired. It's not going to be on a regular basis. It'll be done along until with the ABC grant enforcement of liquor stores. It will cover some of those costs that are involved in that. Do you see any impact with these funds to law enforcement? Didn't sound like you said there would be any.
It's not going to be, we're not, unfortunately, and this is, I'm trying to find the right words for this, so it don't sound overly negative. This will not be a priority. There are other priorities in this community that weigh outweigh this and this will be done as time is available, as an ancillary duty. And it falls way down the line. I don't want to give the misconception that we're going to turn it upside down all of a sudden.
Thank you.
We have Councilmember Draper and then Mayor Dahlmyer in the queue.
Well, I have a question for Chief Legron also. Does, is the full 8,000 that would come in for this fee for law enforcement, is that how much is necessary? How much could you do the same thing for?
I can't. I mean, $8,000 is not going to cover the cost of what this will cost us. It's, it has to be rolled into another grant funding opportunity. Otherwise, you know, it's, it's not so simple. It's just, well, we're gonna send one person out there to do this. I mean, there's a lot required to go along with this, is required of us. This ordinance, as it sits right now, it's, it's nice and we appreciate it. And I, I'm also against underage smoking or providing tobacco to children and that. I'm, I'm not sure how much that we're going to do. And I don't want anybody leaning on us saying that if we do this, this is really gonna turn this around, because I'm not so sure that I can guarantee you that.
Because this is not a tax, it's a fee to help with enforcement. And now you're saying that you can't even say that it would be enforced. Is, am I understanding that?
Correct. I'm not going to make this a priority of the department.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know. I looked at section or attachment B here and there were five cities with a population similar to Orville. And the fees were 100, 250, 150, 208, and 250. So the average of those was about $191. But to my way of thinking, if nothing is gonna really be done, why should we increase the fees? I mean hypothetically, you know, what good is that going to do here?
I have a question. Are those fees going to, there's a specificity. They can only be earmarked for enforcement, correct?
Right.
So I'm, Linda, are you done?
Oh, yeah. I'm just listening.
That's okay. So I'm, I am thinking in the bigger box that we went through a fee schedule update about four years ago.
You're gonna be going through a master fee schedule update in April.
So I, I guess my question is, is the fee structure across the board what we need to look at as opposed to a fee structure just for tobacco?
Again, in April, the master fee schedule will be coming back through the ordinance that we have implemented. And I believe it was April of 2013 or 14, I can't remember exactly. You will increase by CPI. So it'll be about a 2% increase across the board.
So...
This is a fee that will, has been calculated through a change lab solutions. They've calculated, we've, we've used something to calculate this fee.
Right.
We didn't just make it up and we didn't average. But it's fairly close to what the average would be. So the idea is to either impose the fee or not. And then if we're not gonna impose the fee, do we want to then back off of the ban? Because again, at, in November, we were asked to go forward and bring this fee back, which we've done. And we separated it because there are still some issues with what we want to call restrictions instead of a full ban. We would prefer to call it restrictions. But again, you see both sides are here tonight. There are people that are very concerned that with this, this could help with some surveillance to limit youth smoking. But it will impact small business. And it'll impact them by an additional $200 each year.
So, and, and my, my question goes back to the types of businesses, is that, it's like Lorraine came up and spoke to looking out for the small business person and they have a barber shop. There's, there's a difference in, in monitoring that type of business compared to monitoring a convenience slash liquor store that sells items that minors should not have their hands on. So I would think that looking across the board at the businesses, because, you know, to have a business license, I think here is $36?
That's a retail tobacco license. Business licenses are slightly more, but yes.
Yeah.
Slightly more, they're $51.
So I think in all fairness, to look at that whole grid, are we up to date on the cost of doing business within our community as a whole when it comes to the type of, you know, businesses that people have? As opposed to...
Right. So this is to establish the fee if we are going to increase the tobacco, the tobacco retail license.
Right.
This is all this is for. So any fee that we establish, unless we establish them all at once, which we don't, we've, we've already, we brought fees throughout time, we've brought fees. Now, those are all assembled into a master fee. So when you add a new fee, you have to establish it through an ordinance, which is what we're trying to do right now.
Right. But you're saying come April, we're gonna be looking at the entire fee schedule for the city of Orville?
Right.
Including business fees?
We're looking at all the fees. The business license fees will be there.
Yeah.
And as part of the ordinance, you're only gonna be, you're only gonna increase it by CPI, which is about 2%. It could be a little less or a little more. The last time we increased fees, two years ago, I believe it was 2.4%. So some fees went from $83 to $85. And again, that's on a vote by the council. City doesn't increase that. The council would take the vote on that.
So is there anybody else in the queue?
Yep.
That answered my question.
Jack is. Says Jack is.
Lean to the lady.
No, that was the question I wanted to know, what would be the CPI increase in April?
I, I don't know the number. It's approximately...
Approximately 2%. Thank you.
Mr. Berry?
Thank you. When I was approached in November, I think, October, there was a function up at the auditorium and met with one of the ladies, I think that was here. And she was trying to garner my interest in banning a lot of things because they appeal to children or whatever. And I thought, well, I, I don't want to have anything sold, you know, that will endanger children's health. And so I listened more and leaned toward, you know, the idea. Excuse me. But as of January 1st, I had to start thinking about a lot of things. And one of the questions that I asked was, you know, since it's legal, why are we not, why are we opposed to it? And one of the things I was reading in this ordinance, a resolution, it was written a little ambiguous and it said something about restricting the sale of menthol cigarettes. Well, I thought this was kind of a way of, you know, curbing people's rights because cigarettes as a whole are legal. And one of the things I've had to question a lot is what's legal and what people have the right to do. And I don't want to infringe upon their rights. It's freedom of choice. They have the right to choose cigarettes, alcohol, driving fast. It's illegal to drive fast, but they do every day. But it's an individual choice. And when they make an individual choice, they suffer the consequences. Also, the amount of fee that was proposed, it wasn't proposed by Mr. Rust, I don't believe. It was proposed by an outside influence? Okay? And raising it seven times the amount it is now seemed a little exorbitant. And Mr. Spear really pointed out the, the point, you know? We shouldn't harass or impose huge government restrictions on our small business people. And this is another way of doing that, curbing their income by imposing more fees, exorbitant fees, increases. This just leads me to believe next we're going to start increasing the license on barber shops. Raise the fees of that too, seven times. I don't know what they pay now, but seven times might bring a little more. And the police department could watch those pretty close because I've seen some haircuts come out of there. But anyway, my point is, is, is I don't believe in infringing on people's right to choice with the, with the legal form of tobacco in any shape or form. If they want to smoke, fine, let them smoke. It's their right. And also the fees are a little exorbitant. If we want to raise them, you know, one and a half, two times, something like that, I could see that maybe, but no more. Thank you.
We have Councilmember Draper in the queue.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I agree with Jack. And I too have been doing a lot of thinking about this issue of freedom of choice. I've never smoked cigarettes in my life. My parents both smoked and I learned firsthand, you know, how offensive it is and it's dangerous. And although my parents have lived to be quite elderly, the cigarette smoking certainly has not helped their health issues. But again, for me, it's back to freedom of choice and they are legal. And if the, if the police department were actually going to use these fees to try to enforce it, you know, to make sure that there were no sales to minors, et cetera. But we can't even get any guarantee of that. So my question is, why raise the fees, which is supposed to support law enforcement doing more checking when they can't commit to doing more checking? And, and as far as menthol cigarettes or whatever, I'm in agreement with Mr. Berry that, you know, I'm against smoking, but they do have the freedom to choose and it is legal. And so I don't care if they're homeless or if they're a millionaire. If they choose to smoke cigarettes, they have the right to do that, whether or not we agree with their health choices. So I just wanted to add that.
Is there anybody else in the queue? Well, I'd be looking for a motion, but also since we're reviewing fees in the future, I mean, we could...
What, what we can do is bring this back during the April meeting?
Right.
And you can establish the fee then, if that's what you'd like to do.
I'm in agreement with that.
Or you could take a vote one way or the other, too. But I would think that coming back in April, coming back in April, this is open to an increase in fees by CPI. Not this one, but the, the convenience stores.
The, the, so the business license is what we're talking about? They, they purchase a business license and if they sell tobacco, they purchase, so they purchase a $51 business license and if they sell tobacco, they purchase a $36 tobacco license. So. Okay? So if, if the council is in agreement, we can bring this back. Now, again, the ordinance will come back in April as a separate item. It'll be first before, to establish the fee. That's how we'll do it.
What's the pleasure of the council? Looking for a motion.
Or it dies...
I'd like to bring it back in April.
Or it dies without a motion?
All right. I move we bring it back in April.
Madam Mayor, for sake of clarification, I think that the motion would be to continue the item because this is a public hearing, so you don't have to renotice this, you should continue it to a date certain and specify that on the record if it's the pleasure of the council to do what Councilmember Rosario has suggested.
Thank you. So it looks like there's not a second to that, so I'm looking for another motion to either approve or deny item number four on the agenda this evening.
I move to deny.
Looking for a second?
I second that.
Voting will be open here momentarily. So the vote yes is to deny item number four. Is this correct? Moving on to regular business. You know, we're gonna take a short recess because I'm thinking maybe some of you might like to clear the room. And he's got to switch this over for presentation.
Mayor Dahlmyer, there was no vote?
Adults, I'm worried about it. It's the kids.
Sorry. I voted.
Okay. The motion passed.
All votes are in.
Oh, no. I was wondering how come it said no vote?
He's not gonna even worry about it. He just said that three times. It's just, it's just a waste of the...
Got a lot of political government. And then you got the weed issue. Oh, I'm fine, thank you. There's water back there. Yeah, I'll grab one.
Also, so I know what those are?
Before it comes to the wire, if we need to have a group power, we'd be happy to come to the district.
I know you will. I learned my lesson at the last one. I reached out to Jim Day two weeks ago. Yeah. We'll come down, we'll come down, we'll come down to the meeting room.
I have, I have, I have, no problem.
We'll get the encroachment.
We're putting four million in Uba County for Caltrans. I have no problem picking up the phone and talking to the director. Make this problem go away.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna call the meeting back to order. Get the council people to fill their chairs. Matt, Don Rust was asking about the meeting. It is...
No, 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 it's the twenty-first.
Twenty-first at what time?
Ten.
Okay, same location?
Once a month now, yeah, but it's, it's still, we're doing it over at Aaron's spot where there's same ones.
We forgot.
You forgot that you had to come back.
We forgot.
That's not bad. It was only an eight, eight-minute break. That's not bad for you.
I think he's out smoking.
Just like what I do all the time, trust me.
I think he is too. He went out that door.
He is, his sense of humor. Oh, gosh. Okay, so...
Okay, we can get started. We're going to be moving on to item number five. Can you believe we're only on item number five?
Yes.
Mike has a presentation. So we have a presentation of Highway seventy corridor project update. And since I sit on B-CAG, I've seen it. It's good.
This is on? Yeah. Mayor, council, Mike Massaro, contract city engineer. I wanted to give an update to the council on, on SB one in general, kind of how it, how it's affecting us locally. Thank you, ma'am. And so a little bit about how it's going to allocate to us locally here in Oroville and then sort of the bigger picture. And I think the presentation that B County Area Government's put together, B-CAG put together is a, illustrates it pretty well for its effect on our region. Yvonne Garcia is here, programming manager with B-CAG. And he helped put this presentation together last year. I know several of you attended this presentation, I think with Chief LaGron as well, in about August of last year at District Three headquarters in Marysville. And it was, it was presented there. Unfortunately, some of the data has been updated since then in a somewhat negative way. But I want to talk about SB one. The Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017 was signed into law on April twenty-eighth of 2017. It allocates over fifty-four billion, fifty with a B, billion, over ten years to infrastructure in the state. It's a pretty significant allocation of funds. What that means for Bute County is about eleven million dollars over ten years, with the bulk of that going to Bute County and, and then Chico. What it means for Oroville, it's about a little over four hundred thousand dollars to Oroville over ten years in our local streets and roads funds. We already, we just received our first allocation from SB one, I think last week, it's about a hundred and two thousand? No? Annual. Okay. Yeah, partial. But it'll work out to about forty thousand a year for us. So it's not a significant amount to our local roads and streets funds in terms of repaving streets. It's, it's, it's not going to make a huge difference to us on repaving roads. It's, it is a help and we certainly appreciate it. But it has a much larger impact to us as a region and this presentation speaks to that. Next slide. Oh, I got it. You gave me control? I was optimistic. Okay, so this is the background on the project. California Transportation Commission first set this vision in nineteen eighty-eight to look at the traffic corridors of Highway seventy and Highway ninety-nine for the special studies list. And they completed the corridor study in nineteen ninety. So, can we go to presentation?
It's because it's in PDF and it's too long, sorry.
Sorry. I thought we had the, I thought I gave you the PowerPoint version. Sorry. So this map's a little busy, but I encourage you to go to the website and look at it because a lot of information is conveyed here. And talks a little bit about the history, the current, the investments that have been made to date along Highway ninety-nine and Highway seventy corridors and what they plan to do for the future. This is the map that's been updated since some of you attended the presentation last year. You'll notice in the Bute County cor, portion of the Highway seventy corridor, a lot of fatalities this year. At the time of the presentation, it was eleven, I think thirteen by November and thirty-five since two thousand and ten. It's also been illustrated to be inadequate evacuation route in the case of a dam emergency. That's been tested. So widening the highway would be certainly beneficial in a, in a few, few ways. Traffic safety being number one and then of course evacuation as well. Part of what's happened here recently is the State Highway Operation and Protection Fund has focused its attention on Highway seventy and they've determined that they're going to provide funds to this, to this corridor. Due, due mostly to the fatalities map that you see there unfortunately. So this is going to be a significant investment of, of shop funds going forward. And it's really going to make a huge difference in completing this project. Thank you, Don. Next. So this is the corridor map. Again, it's a little hard to see on this scale, but I would encourage you to take a look at it, the website again, and, and look at the section. The, the sections one through three in the bo, in the middle pane, those are the ones primarily in Bute County. And it's a pretty significant investment, close to ninety-one million dollars to widen that section of highway. And B-CAG has recommended that State Highway Improvement Funds be allocated to those sections. And also Caltrans has allocated the shop funds to it. So that's a very significant investment to get that project forward, going forward. So with that money, once it's adopted, we'll know in March if, if those recommendations from B-CAG are accepted by Caltrans. We'll see project construction starting on section one in twenty twenty. Section two as well, and then we should see construction completed on section three by twenty twenty-three, if those move forward. And that'd be very significant improvements to that corridor from south end of Oroville all the way down to the county line. And then, as you can see, additional projects would be completed through Uba County all the way down to Marysville. And really significant impact on the region. So as I just mentioned, the current status, environmental documentation is expected to be completed this spring for segments one and two. And they're going to be moving forward with constr, so we should see construction in a couple of years. And then again, segment three in twenty twenty-three. And a lot of funding has already been allocated to sections five, six, and seven. And so the corridor may actually, because of SB one, this corridor might actually complete. It's a project that's been around for a very long time. As you can see, the allocations and the recommendations by B-CAG of S-TIP funds and of course, Caltrans shop dollars, as you can see, it's a major portion to complete the project due to, due to safety concerns. In addition to this, B-CAG Board of Directors has allocated an additional two million to be shifted into Uba County to help them complete the corridor through segments four and five. And they're also applied in November for an infra grant of another thirty-six million from federal funds. We're hoping there's enough eyes on the region and this, these issues to get this money allocated and, and complete the job all the way through. I encourage you to go to the website. They, they did a really good job on the video explaining the history and the corridor, some of the safety concerns, and there's discussion on there. It's really informational helpful to the issues at hand. Just want the council to know what, how we coordinate with B-CAG, as, as Mayor Dahlmer mentioned, she sits on the board. So we're pretty involved. I represent the city on the TAC Committee. We have a meeting this Thursday. We meet once a month and talk about issues. They provide us with funding support for signalization and roundabout projects, transit center, park and ride. They provide letters of endorsements, technical and lobbying support on competitive grants. A lot of the projects we've done around here have been, been built with competitive grants through capacity management, air quality, C-MAC grants from federal. We have an ATP grant that we're moving forward with this year. It's about three point four million dollars with another five hundred thousand dollars in C-MAC grant to do an active transportation program project connecting River Trail through Oro Dam Boulevard and through the city. So we're going to be getting going on procurement on that project to get a design firm onboard to do plenary engineering on that. And with construction planning to go in twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty twenty. So these are significant programs and SB one has allocated additional funds to these, to these programs that already exist. It's nearly doubled the active transportation projects grant funding. And so it's really significant impact. As I mentioned, we've already, we have a, an ATP project that we're working on now, so. If you have questions or comments, Yvonne is here as well. You can follow with B-CAG. They're always looking for letters of support and help in, in, a lot of what they do is, is done through grant funding and they're organized to chase those grants and, and whatever public support they can get from cities and, and citizens to help compete for those grants helps the region and helps us get projects accomplished that we wouldn't normally have been able to afford to complete.
Madam Mayor?
I got a question.
I, I think I'm in...
We, we have Councilmember Del Rosario and Councilmember Thompson in the queue. Okay, it's how you do it.
Okay. There are certain, I'm highly in favor of this, so I'll be writing a letter for you. But there are certain sections of this road that are more dangerous than others. And I'm wondering why those aren't being completed first.
I, I think, you know, if I look at the map, I mean, I could be interpreting it wrong, but sections one and two showed the greatest number of fatalities in...
And section two isn't fully funded, you said?
Uh, it is.
It is now?
Well, if, if the S-TIP recommendations are accepted, it will have full funding for the full five lanes, as you see there. And so if you look at the concentration of fatalities in twenty seventeen in section, segments one and two, that is a priority and construction would start in twenty twenty-two for both those segments.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Thompson?
Is there any, I know there's a lot of roads that connect on to Highway seventy. Is there any thought or plan for any, any overpasses, like even over or down the road? Because there's a lot of cross-traffic that can go and I know with five lanes. I mean, obviously I'm everything, I don't know if anybody's opposed to this. There's a lot of benefits, I'm just curious in regard... There's a lot of benefits, I'm just curious in regards if there's going to be any overpasses for some of the more busy streets and whatnot for those.
Yeah, I know areas you're referring to and I think those probably are safety concerns. I'm not sure where they sit in terms of applications for grant funding. Yvonne, do you know of any?
Not at this time. Our focus has been on Highway seventy. And we have a financial plan. The entire corridor between Oroville and Marysville has met Caltrans's safety warrant. So those safety funds are paying for the lion's share to do three lanes. One lane per direction, but really a center turn lane, an eight-foot shoulder. B CAG is leveraging its limited funds to add the capacity, increasing the additional lane on each, on each side. We feel confident, we have the lock on widening Highway seventy from Ofer Road all the way to the Yuba County line. And we have a federal grant. If we're successful, we'll, we'll come up with another thirty-six million to fund Yuba County side. That's, that's the plan.
I'm not going to have you repeated in the microphone so the public can hear, but it basically no overpass. They've got funding all the way to the Butte-Yuba line. And with federal funding, they're hoping to be awarded, we'll finish it all the way down into Marysville.
And that's the thirty-six million?
Yes.
So it won't be a freeway, it will just be a highway? Because.
It's, yeah, correct, it's still be a highway.
Butte County is the only large county in California that doesn't have a freeway. And we get an awful lot of traffic. And I, I'm, while I'm thrilled that you're putting a highway in, we really need a freeway. We need to be able to cross those roads without left turn problems. Those, that's where most of our accidents occur.
The design will really be similar to that.
Ivan, I'll ask you to speak into the microphone, thank you.
My name's Yvonne Garcia, I'm the Programming Manager for the Butte County Association of Governments. The design that we are pursuing is similar to that south of Yuba City. Just two lanes per direction, center turn lane, eight-foot shoulders. And that's the financial reality of what we can come up with. And being able to leverage as a region our funds with Caltrans's funds.
Would you please put Mr. Garcia's email address back up because I wanted to write a letter in support of this for you too? Thank you when it gets there.
Okay, this was for informational purposes only, thank you very much.
It's great.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number six, amendment to the airport position approach, path indicators and runway and identifier lights, construction contract with Pacific Underground Services Incorporated. Mr. Farley.
Mayor and Council, Rick Farley. Excuse me, Enterprise Home and Business Assistance Coordinator.
So before you get started, this is a continuation contract, is that correct or not?
It's a change order for a small addition.
Right, for the lights that I think are required, correct?
Well, that we put in with a grant. This project, including engineering, was almost four hundred and fifty thousand. This along with the drainage that was done. But yes, the, the issue that came up, that this was a World War Two airport, so it's seventy-five years ago. Some of the AS. Some of the AS installed plans from back then weren't, and even later ones didn't turn out to be exactly the way the existing wiring was, so the contractor had to run more wire, ran to some additional expense out there that he didn't make me aware of until the end of the project. Normally I would bring that back for a change order ahead of time. But ninety percent of the project is paid by federal grant. Unfortunately, the last couple of years, the state has not had the funding to do the five percent match. I'm hoping with their situation this year, states better off than most of us to once again get a five percent match on our next project. Otherwise, there'd be very little impact on our airport budget.
Any questions from the dais? None.
So this comes out of the airport fund?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, I believe there was a speaker card for this item.
There is a speaker. There is a speaker on this, I'm sorry. Okay, okay, good. So the money's coming out of airport funds, I'm looking for a motion on item number six.
I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution number eighty-six eighty-seven, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an amendment to the project contract.
Eighty-six eighty-six?
Oh, I'm sorry, I looked at the wrong, I saw eighty-six eighty-seven on mine.
Previous page.
Okay.
Six, it's at the top, at the very top of the page, the next page.
I'm looking at this. Okay, eighty-six eighty-six. Authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an amendment to the project contract with All American Construction Incorporated in the amount of seven thousand two hundred twenty-three dollars and ninety-three cents. Is that the right?
I'm reading from my agenda, is this not?
You're on number six.
Number seven, it's six, it's the very top of the page. Oh heavens.
Yeah, they're very similar.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was on the wrong one. Okay, I will try this again. Oh dear. Let's see here.
Here, here's the list of it here.
Oh, thank you. Okay, I move that we adopt resolution number eighty-six eighty-six, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an amendment to the project contract with Pacific Underground Services Incorporated in the amount of three thousand six hundred fifteen dollars.
I second that.
First and second, voting is open. Del Rosario?
Sorry.
Thank you. All votes are in, voting closed.
Motion passed.
Moving on to item number seven and amendment to the airport pipeline and grading construction contract with All American Construction. Is there any questions or comments for Mr. Farley? Mr. Farley, would you like to address the council or?
I'll try to keep it very brief and I know it's getting late. There just were two old risers from some, a drainage, old drainage pipe that we had to deal with once they were into the project and I thought they were going to come back sooner with the dollar amount, or then I thought, well, maybe they just took care of it while they were there, but there was a cost. And just to be clear, we do pay a hundred percent of it and as soon as I pay it, I submit to FAA and they reimburse the ninety percent. So we get it back pretty quickly and then if this year there is the Caltrans match, we'll get that five percent very quickly too. But I don't want to promise that until we know whether those funds come available.
Thank you. Any other?
Just to, this really cleaned up the drainage on the long runway. It's really nice out there now and I don't think we'll have any problem with standing water in the center of that runway.
Any additional questions or comments from the dais? Looking for a motion on item number seven?
I move that we adopt resolution eighty-six eighty-seven, agreement number three-one-eight-nine dash one. Second.
First and second, voting's open. Voting closed.
The motion passed.
Moving on to item number eight, amendment to the fixed base operator lease agreement with Tom Hagler, DBA Table Mountain Aviation. Number eight, Mr. Farley.
Yes. We, the contract expired in November of twenty sixteen. It saved me a while to get this rewritten into you. I wanted some experience out there plus just to write the workload. But this will be the third real extension of this contract. We're already, it's a five-year extension, but we're a little over a year into already, so it's really a little less than four years remaining. But I think it's worked well. The majority of the pilots really like the work that Mr. Hagler does on their aircraft and in a way, we're fortunate to still have a mechanic or repair business at our airport. A lot of airports have lost their repair shop and consequently it's caused a decline in the airport, so. I'm really glad we have Mr. Hagler out there and he also operates the jet fuel on the full service side, so. And that's quite expensive to maintain that truck, so really helps us out out there.
Any questions or comments from the council?
I move we adopt resolution eighty-six eighty-eight, agreement number one-seven-six-one dash six.
First and second, voting is open.
Janet. Thank you.
All votes are in, does anybody wish to change their vote? Voting closed.
The motion passed.
Moving on to the Finance Department, item number nine, California State.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Rick, thank you. California State Department of Finance, DOF, approval of the last and final recognized obligation payment schedule, the ROPS. Ruth, you decided to get up?
Yes, need to stretch my legs. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor Goodson and City Council members. I just wanted to let you know how hard staff has been working to get this money back. This is part of a one point eight million dollar state clawback for the RDA and we've been trying ever since I've been here to get it back. And we haven't been successful and finally, they told us, if you do your last and final ROPS, you'll get it back. So that's what we've been working on. And we've been working really hard, but they're giving us interest, so it's three point five million dollars now. Seven hundred and twelve thousand needs to go to the Housing Department, but the rest of it is for the general fund. I'm recommending that all of this money go into our new pension trust. We have a twenty-two million dollar unfunded pension liability that we're trying to address, so. This is one-time money, it's not money that we can budget with, but we're getting it over five years. So my recommendation is that each, each time we get it, we put it right into our pension trust. So I'm looking for a direction tonight.
Any questions or comments from the dais?
So you, you and I spoke about this on Friday and so. So approximately how much is going to be paid over a five-year period?
Two point five million to the general fund and seven hundred and twelve thousand, I believe, to the housing fund.
And how much, did you say that you wanted to allocate to the, it's one-time money, all of it?
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the staff report now. It's two point eight to the city's general fund and seven hundred and seventeen thousand will go to the housing fund.
And so you want the two point eight million to go into the PERS?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah, we do have a twenty-two million dollar.
Absolutely.
Pension, unfunded pension liability, we're, we have thirty years to pay it off, but the, the staff at PERS is trying to get it down to twenty years. So we will be struggling even more to come up with a higher payment.
But I recall, I saw having a conversation that anytime that we came across one-time monies, that it would go directly into the PERS. Thank you.
And the staff report is not looking for direction, there's actually a resolution.
All right, any other discussion or looking for a motion?
Okay, I move that we adopt resolution number eighty-six eighty-nine, approving and accepting the unanticipated revenue in the amount of three million five hundred eighty-six thousand six hundred sixteen and allocate two million eight hundred sixty-nine thousand two hundred ninety-four from the California State Department of Finance, approval of the last and final recognized obligation payment schedule to be deposited into the city's new section one-fifteen pension trust account.
A second.
There's a first and a second. Voting should be open. All votes are in, voting closed.
The motion passed.
Moving on to item number ten. Item number ten is actually being pulled off the agenda this evening and I'm going to let.
Derek Cole, on behalf of Scott Huber. Madam Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Huber and I were discussing this matter earlier today. A question has arisen as to whether the position of the Community Development Director held simultaneously with the city administrator would run afoul of what's, what we call the incompatible office statute. You all probably hear about this in your AB twelve thirty-four training that you have to do. But it basically says you can't hold two incompatible offices simultaneously. There is a question, we're not saying that it is in fact an incompatible office, but Mr. Huber would like a little time to look at this and so the request is simply to pull the item and he will work to bring it back at an appropriate time.
So item number ten is being pulled. We did have a speaker card on this, but you certainly can take your time in the non-agenda items if you'd like. Yes. We're almost done. Council announcement and committee reports, anybody from the dais wish to report?
We have Councilmember Draper in the queue.
First of all, I know that some people here will be happy to hear that some of us attended the League of California Cities Conference January seventeenth and January eighteenth in Sacramento. There were several really excellent workshops. One that I found quite interesting was called Communications and the New Media. And they emphasized that we as elected officials need to be very careful about what we post on social media, whether it's on our own page or in a public forum. That we were cautioned to consider social media to be like an open mic and there is possibility of Brown Act violations if there are four people or more on the council liking or commenting a post and weighing in. So that was really, I thought, very helpful. January twenty-second, I attended the Butte County Homeless Continuum of Care Committee meeting and that was really a great meeting. There were twenty slots that have opened up for housing. Ed Mayer was contacted about this by Annie Terry of the Oroville Rescue Mission. And they would qualify, but they don't have someone to do the data entry for them to be in the system completely. And so I'm going to be talking to some people, trying to see if there's some way that there might be a grant or something that would help them to do that. I also attended homelessness committee, it's a Butte County City of Oroville committee. On Tuesday, January thirtieth, it was a very informational meeting. They're working to get homeless people out of Hewitt Park and Bedrock Park and simultaneously have them counseled by people from behavioral health to try to put them in touch with services that they might need. So I'm, I'm hoping that will, will work out well. I attended the docents appreciation luncheon on January thirtieth and this is always a really nice lunch. Don Nevers does an incredible job organizing that. There were forty-five docents there who have volunteered two thousand two hundred sixty hours at our museums this year. Amazing group of people. And if anyone would like to volunteer, I think you could contact Don Nevers. They're having to close the Lot Mansion and the Pioneer Museum one day a week additionally because they don't have enough docents to keep them open. And it's a wonderful job and a wonderful opportunity people have for our citizens to learn about our history here in Oroville. And I attended the MONG celebration dinner on February third. They honored individuals and organizations that helped make their annual MONG New Year a great success and it was really a nice evening. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have a quick committee report. And I also attended the California League of Cities workshops, seventeenth and the eighteenth of January. And I really enjoyed the Your Legal Powers and Obligations. And it's, it was a workshop regarding the city and city officials, the operation with a strong focus on the Brown Act. And it was a workshop regarding the city and city officials, the operation with a strong focus on the Brown Act. And there was also a workshop, policy role in land use planning. And it's important to be knowledgeable on land use planning because of the long-term impacts that it can have on a city's environment. Financial Responsibilities and City Revenues Workshop was another one that we attended, and that covered how to cover your responsibilities as elected officials in exercising fiscal accountability, responsibility and transparency in open government. January twenty-second, I attended an Oroville Strong Meeting. The emphasis was on holding DWR accountable. January twenty-third, Feather River and Parks Meeting. I was saddened to hear that April Ramaj had put in her resignation, and she has moved on. And we really appreciate her service. She's been a very vital entity in our city. On January the twenty-fourth, we had our SCORE Sewer Commission Meeting, Oroville Association of Realtors Installation Banquet. I was able to attend that on the twenty-sixth. There was a raffle, and over one thousand seven hundred dollars was accumulated from that raffle, and it was donated to the Veterans Memorial Park. It was given to Mr., our supervisor, Bill Connolly. We did have, as I attended with Linda Draper and Councilman Art Hadley, the Homeless County and City Ad Hoc Committee. And so I think we all came out of that meeting very encouraged that there's a collaboration of efforts to minimize the homeless activity in our parks with therapeutic intervention. February second, I was asked to speak at Oakdale Heights Fourth Grade Presentation. It was a Q and A, and it was centered around why do people run for a public office? Once again, several of us attended MONG New Year Dinner on February third. And that's all I have.
We're going all the way back to the sixteenth, aren't we?
Yes, we are. It's been a long.
I attended the Martin Luther King Breakfast, the League of Cities Meeting, and the MONG Breakfast. I enjoyed them all and learned a lot from the League of Cities.
Alrighty then. You know, we did have the Center of Economic Development on the eighteenth in the community, and it actually went really well. But on the seventeenth, I actually attended a broadband meeting, which is still one of the biggest issues, I believe, that we have in our community. And we do have a pot of money that could be dedicated to broadband if we chose to bring it back. Because the corridor for manufacturing and businesses along Fifth or Feather River really could use some internet. So the people at Chico State and Center for Economic Development, Jason and Courtney, have dedicated their time and the grants that they're getting to work together with the City of Oroville and improving our broadband. When the CPUC has done its own test, when I went to Sacramento a few months ago, and they, after hearing what it's like in the day and the life of a business owner in this community with no broadband, they did their own survey and found that our standard internet service on the AT&amp;T side is below the safety standards. So anyway, that was a good meeting. I've had probably four of them since then. So Daughters of Revolution, I was asked to be one of their guests at their annual luncheon, which I try and go on a regular basis every year, and it's actually quite fun and to hear some of the stories. Chico City Transit Meeting. This, I've had, he's left, but it was called by Chico City Council to discuss whether or not that it was a good idea to have a transit hub in Oroville. So I took the opportunity to be part of that meeting and let them know that having a train come through the depot again was actually a really good idea for our community. So that was fun to represent that. You're welcome. Just, you know, like the city attorney said, that it's coming up on the one year testing of the evacuation routes in our community. And the spillway incident, I was making light of whoever said something about it being tested. It's coming up, so we're all getting a lot of phone calls and requests for interviews on what's it like a year later. So trying to, trying to deal with that as, you know, council and city, we're all working hard on that. Docent Luncheon was awesome. Went to a Neighborhood Watch Meeting. The next day, I met with a group of pastors and talked to them about some of the things that were happening and asked for their help. So anyway, that was, that took me up to the end of January. LAFCO Meeting, Annual City Selection. We will, as of the last meeting, finalize the mosquito, the Butte County mosquito and vector control is now officially taking care of Oroville. And February second was Groundhog Day. Alright, I'm done. Anybody else?
That's a lot of reports. I'll be brief. Primarily, I think the main thing I want to mention is going to also the League of Cities. Wasn't able to attend all the classes, but I got some great information. I think one of the main things I picked up from there, on top of the other things that some of the council members mentioned about safety, online, online presence, is one of the speakers spoke in regards to the trouble that cities are facing regarding actually getting funds collected from cannabis into banks. He mentioned one city specifically that was dealing with the bank, and then no longer was able to deposit their funds into that bank. So I think it's important for us as a city to consider that as we potentially move forward in that direction. So that was my main topic to bring up.
Anybody else? Alrighty. Administration Reports. Chief?
Madam Mayor, just quickly, last Saturday, I attended a pancake breakfast benefit for the SPCA at the Municipal Auditorium. It was a very good event. They're in desperate need of funds right now. There was ninety dogs that just came in from a puppy mill that they're trying to take care of and get back out to the responsible owners. So anybody that has the ability, they could certainly use those donations now.
Thank you for passing that on. In case you didn't hear, the SPCA needs some donations because they found a puppy mill. And they're desperate for some support.
And if I could just touch on the homeless meeting that I attended with Councilperson Draper, Vice Mayor Goodson, and Councilman Hadley, that was a very positive meeting for our community. We got firm commitments from the county, from support, from Behavioral Health, and also from Social Services to collectively and collaboratively work toward a solution for our community. So it was a very positive thing that went very well for us.
I just wanted to add that District Supervisor Bill Connolly was there, and so was Mr. Doug Teeter. So that was encouraging as well.
Okay, Ruth?
After two months off of CalPERS meetings, we're heading back down there this month. I don't have the logistics yet, but I'll send an email to everybody when I get it from the League of California Cities. That should be in a couple of weeks. And just want to let you know, I opened the budget year this morning in our software, so we're ready to budget for eighteen nineteen. I'm busy estimating the revenues because pretty much tells us what we have to spend the next year. So I'm looking forward to the budget year.
Mr. Rust?
Yes, we have received a request from the California Public Utilities Commissioner, the CPUC, to utilize the City Council Chambers on March fourteenth, two thousand eighteen, for a public workshop slash forum on the California Advanced Services Fund to advance broadband adoption and infrastructure development in the unserved and underserved areas of Oroville. And that workshop will be from nine thirty AM to five PM. Again, that's Wednesday, March fourteenth, two thousand eighteen.
So we're, again, unless you guys have an objection, we're gonna let this, the PUC use the office or the building here. The only thing that I have to talk about is, we've talked a lot about cannabis in a roundabout way. I sent out a video this, over the weekend, that I received from the International Associations of Chiefs of Police. It's about an hour and a half, but I think it would be interesting for all the council members to watch that. Again, it was from the conference that the AICP just had in October. Talks about a lot of things, specifically about the item that Mr. Thompson just talked about regarding banking. Currently, according to them, across the United States, there are three hundred entities that are banking. So I mean, it's something to take from there. I'm not advocating for or against it. I just think if we're looking to move forward with this, we need to have all the information, and everybody needs to be informed on it. And I just think it was a great video to look at. And again, the organization, I think, speaks a lot to it. So, thank you.
How do we get the video?
It's on your email.
And sent to you.
Okay.
And I received that from Chief Legron.
Anybody else? Moving on, we have non-agenda item speakers, Bobby O'Reilly.
Good evening again. I want to real quickly thank Jack Barry and Chief Legron for attending our public Q and A that I put on at the South Community Resource Center. Some couldn't make it.
Oh, but I watched.
It was a great, great event, in my opinion, and the opinion of others who gave me feedback. Went very well administered, and we had no issues. Lots of questions answered. There are, however, still lots of questions. I am curious as to when, there might be a city one, a Q and A, public forum for us to ask questions and get answers. I urge you guys to watch your social media. You guys mentioned your social media pages and stuff. My urge is to watch and maybe not get involved if you don't need to, but watch and pay attention to what the community is saying. You know, there's community members who are commenting, if you have a Facebook page, they're commenting on all of your Facebook pages about things that they're for, against, want, need, don't want. And it seems to me personally and people I speak with that things aren't being listened to or taken into consideration. So if you have a Facebook page and you utilize your Facebook page, personal or otherwise, please pay attention to it and just take into consideration the people, what the people are telling you. My wife works for mental health, Butte County Mental Health. She works in Chico at the Crisis Center. And it was great to hear somebody speak a minute ago that they're going to start utilizing. I have it in my notes here to come tonight and speak about. There are a lot of resources that they offer that are not being utilized by Oroville. So I was gonna mention that it might be something to look into, but it sounds like somebody already is. My last thing I want to mention is, and this isn't directed at any one person, it's directed at the council as a whole. When Billy Spear was talking at the beginning of this meeting on Agenda Item Number One, there was some disrespectful behavior, some dirty looks, some eye-rolling, some, some stuff that you, as a council, should take into consideration. Monitor yourself, make sure that you're not giving off that vibe, please, because it feels disrespectful not only to the person up here talking, but to the community who is back here watching. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Bob. Bobby. Bill, Spear.
Billy, Bobby, it's the same. Thank you. I'm pro-life. You can be pro-choice if you want to be. I believe in protecting unborn babies. I believe in, you can be a murderer if you want, but there will be a judgment for the choices that we make. You can choose to break federal law, and when the swamp gets done being drained in DC, either the DOJ or the FBI, IRS, ATF, one of them will do their job. And your choices, there is consequence to the choices. And hopefully, it won't even have to be one of them. Hopefully, it'll be the citizens of Oroville will file a class action lawsuit and hold you responsible for breaking federal laws and making detriment to our city. Also, I'd like to close in prayer. My Second Amendment right to a freedom of speech. On the State of the Union, when the President, Donald Trump, said, "In this country, we don't worship government, we worship God." A clear separation of church and state. So Father God, in the name of Jesus, I pray for our city. I pray for our city council members, that you would give them wisdom to guide down this road that we have for our future, that you would intercede and bless us, Lord. Let us be a city of gold. Let us prosper, Lord. Your plans for us is to prosper. Your plans, Father, is to bless. Your plans are for us to worship you. So we rebuke the Lion Devil in the name of Jesus, and we stand against him. We declare, Father, souls, we declare, we come in intercession for the homeless person, for the people in the park, not to move them around, but to bring them in to our society, being active, loving members, to show them that they are cared about, that they are loved. We intercede for the people in our jail that you put in our city, for us to be, to make a difference, for us to bring them out, not just to store them away like they don't, like they don't matter. For us to raise up our kids in an environment that's healthy. For us to utilize our resources wisely, for us to work together, not red, not blue, but purple, preserving life. Father, help us, Lord, to be the city that you've called us to be. Help us to have the wisdom. Help us, our county and our state, Lord, our state needs you, Lord. We need your kingdom come, your will be done, in Oroville as is in heaven. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Again, good evening, council, Madam Mayor. I wanted to speak to the employment agreement that was, of course, tabled this evening regarding Mr. Rust and a couple of observed concerns that I have, and it goes right perhaps to the AB twelve thirty-four training. You know, we're always talking about having all of our eggs in one basket, and it's quite evident that all of you rely heavily on Mr. Rust, which is really a tribute to his skill set. He's a very bright man. And however, that being said, as any of us know, information is power. And he holds all the cards in this, in this school here, if you will. And on some level, that's somewhat concerning because I think it's important that you have a stream of various input to you, to your decision-making. And I just think that wisdom would say that you need to find a way to have other employment assets. He does serve at the pleasure of the board, Mr. Rust does. And I know that his evaluations is coming up here in February. It was, of course, in the packet. And so that being said, because he is a very smart man, has a lot of information, and at times, you're, it's just evident, at times you're grasping for information, and of course, he's there to rush in to provide that information. But in that process, it's, at times, almost each and every one of you, as I've been observing, there is elements of being somewhat condescending, and that concerns me as a citizen because he works for you, and as an employee, he should always hold you in the highest esteem and the greatest respect. I expect that of my employees. You should expect that of your employees. I expect that of my employees. You should expect that of your employees. And so it's just a bit of advice, one employer to another. And so as you consider his evaluation, and you consider the role that he plays and the information that he gives you. That being said, I believe that if too much power is centralized in one individual, that you could be subject, or he could be subject to nefarious influence. When it comes to the marijuana issue, it's evident by the body of information he provides to you, like in 133-page agenda item tonight, there was no opposing views to the issues of marijuana. It's evident that there is somewhat of a bias in the information he's providing you or the absence of the letter from the Congressman that was mentioned earlier by Pastor Terry. So to me, there, there are some issues there. I think some of those concerns are noteworthy. I have 10 seconds. I did want to talk about, and I just, I'll do it at another time. I'm out of time. Thank you very much.
Stephanie?
Hello. First of all, I'd like to say that I, I am of no religion. I grew up a certain religion and I've chosen as an adult to be of no religion. Therefore, I have innate morals. And, and I feel like a lot of, I feel like some people in this city feel like, because they do have a religion and they do rely heavily on their religion, that we all need to follow their religion's rules. And I, I, I can't tell you how much that deeply offends me. And it feels extremely disrespectful that I, as an adult, need to be told what to do or how to think by somebody else because their religion is different. I, I respect their right to have any belief that, that they have as long as it doesn't hurt anybody else. And I would really appreciate the same respect and kind. And, and I, it has nothing to do with being a good Christian, bad Christian, anything like that. It's about being a respectful human being and that we all have the right to whatever views that happens to be. And I just think we could do without so much religion in this room. The other issue that I wanted to talk about was that the, the State of California believes so fully in backing the legalization of cannabis, that the state treasurer and Attorney General are working together to set up a state bank to help cannabis companies who are forced to work in cash only. There's also a push within the Senate by Republican and Democrat senators backing a bill that would legalize cannabis. This is not just about pot. This is about the millions of people that are clogging our jails due to minor marijuana convictions that were often their third strike. As each state legalizes cannabis, the reversal of these convictions will free up the extremely full state prisons, which are terrible, terrible burdens on taxpayer funds. As we know, in California, the capacity of jails causes some offenders to be released without any time served. So the recidivism rate increases in overall lawlessness as well. There seems to be some issue within our city of people upset that we would consider making moves that are against federal law. There are many federal laws that we would all consider silly and ridiculous, ranging from illegal pig wanderings to onion rings. The war on drugs is decades old and it's time for us to realize that the way we've handled things so far is no longer working, if it ever worked. As I reported before, the Portugal has legalized all drugs and had tremendous fascinating outcomes. But when it comes to federal laws, they don't always get things right. Sometimes the state has to step in and if the feds are actively trying to enforce laws that are detrimental to people or restricting people's rights,
Time.
the states have an obligation to protect their citizens. One example, two sentences.
Stephanie.
Two sentences. One example that I'm grateful for is my personal right to vote. Many men in Congress were not willing to even think about the fact that as a woman, we should have the right to vote. Women's right to vote was passed state by state and then became too overwhelming that the, it was passed generally and became an amendment. But I don't think that the, that whether or not the feds...
Stephanie, your time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thomas? Is there a Thomas here?
I'm here, but I've passed.
Okay.
I think I'll have a better, a bigger audience in the newspaper.
Okay. Eric, I've already called your name. Steve Christensen?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council staff, I'm Steve Christensen. At past council meetings, I've always appreciated it when, when Mr. Rust or Mr. Huber would politely interrupt someone if they were in the middle of a misstatement. In fact, I noticed a pinch hitter attorney set somebody straight tonight. I think it's a good idea to keep things factual and legal. December 19th, there was a misstatement that went unchallenged. The, the discussion was Jamboree Housing. And Counselor Draper said, "Jamboree Housing is not low income. Forty-four percent of the units are for tenants of above moderate income." Well, no one from the city corrected Counselor Draper, so I asked for more information. So I did receive the unit mix breakdown from Jamboree. There is a text I want to quote. "One hundred percent of units are set aside for low income or below. No units are restricted to households at moderate income or above." I don't know why Mr. Rust did not politely interrupt this time and present this accurate unit mix. And then, moving forward four weeks, Counselor Draper did admit she had made a mistake. I quote her, she said, "One of our constituents has been greatly concerned about an error I made at the December 19th meeting." Well, that's true. I'm, I'm greatly concerned, even more so now, about our city government. When these false statements stand unchallenged, I feel that's a violation of the public trust. And public trust is something way too valuable for you to throw away. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
If I could add to that, I clarified at that last meeting that I had inadvertently read off a sheet that listed the city's housing goals. And so I did state the incorrect statistics or percentages for the income levels, but I corrected it at the last meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. And the final blue card that I have up here is John Mitchell.
Good evening, Mayor, council. I really have a lot to say until I heard your discussion earlier about working alongside the county in behavioral health to address the homeless situation. And it just got brought to my attention lately, dealing with someone that's come out of behavioral health in Chico, I'm at the Puff Unit, and trying to help them get into a long-term treatment program. As we were going through the list, noticing that most of the information on there was almost six years out of date, that some of those treatment centers were closed down over five years ago. So just want to urge you, as you press forward in that, to please make sure that Behavioral Health or whoever is handing out the right information because it would help all of us along. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else?
Hello, council. My name is Travis Eddington. I just wanted to come up here and say, let you know what's going on in your city. I'm from Silver Springs, Nevada, born and raised there, Lyon County. And for the last 15 months, I've lived in Oroville. And what's going on here is a whole lot of hope and restoration. I was a drug addict for 10 years. Now I'm no longer. I'm 15 months clean and sober. Thank you, Jesus. And I just want to tell you, I've been learning a lot lately. And the one thing I learned today, it says in the Bible, that where there's counsel, there's safety. So I want to thank you guys for keeping the city safe and continue to get led with your integrity in mind. And just want to say thank you so much and continue on what you're doing.
Thank you.
Good job.
Okay, anybody else? This meeting is adjourned. The next regularly scheduled meeting will be held Tuesday, February 20th, at 5:30 for closed session, 6:30 for open.
Dilly-dilly.
What? Dilly-dilly, is that what you said? Yeah.
You gonna have a beer, are ya? A malt? A dilly-dilly? I want to find out more about the airport. I would love it. I would, I would really like that. Okay. Sure. Okay. Sure. Do you have your calendar?